Can everyone mute their their microphones for the time being, just so there's not so much feedback? Susan, I accidentally muted you. Let me see if I can unmute you here. Oh, no, you're unmuted.
Okay, great.
In the, oh, the mayor is here. Sorry, Brian is here.
Yes, the mayor's here.
Sorry, Brian.
The mayor is muted.
I have unmuted the mayor.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm late.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, good. Another day. Anthony's got a little bit of a beard going, huh?
Hey, we're in a pandemic, right?
We are live on YouTube right now, on the school committee's YouTube channel. And Brian, did you want to start the meeting?
I don't have a gavel anymore, so I gotta... Good evening, everyone. We will now call to order the Revia School Committee meeting of Tuesday, April 28th. Roll call.
Mr. D'Ambrosio.
Here.
Mr. Ferenti.
Yeah.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Geez.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Fred, you have to unmute.
Mr. Sinella.
Here.
Ms. Ty. Ms. Ty, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, Ms. Ty.
Thank you. Here.
And Mayor Ego.
Here. All right, we'll start with the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly.
Pledge of allegiance.
All right, Stacy.
Yes, pledge of allegiance.
Please.
Yes. Everyone unmute. Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the black
United States of America.
America, and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, just as for all.
Thank you for that reminder, Stacy. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to attempt to share my screen. And run through a number of items that are on the superintendent's report. That hopefully will highlight a lot of what we've been working on with our remote learning plan and then take us through the other items in succession with the budget, the food services update, the New Revia High School update, which is a piece that I'm really excited about, and an update on our search for Dr. Vidal's replacement, which of course will be very difficult to find. So let me see if I can do this as a slideshow. Does that look like a PowerPoint to you guys?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I wanted to start by talking about connectivity. We spent the first several weeks of the school closure trying to make sure that we were connecting with and engage with all of our students. So one of our big tasks was giving out devices to anyone who didn't have one. And we targeted making sure that there was at least one device for each family. We are working with the state now to see if we can procure more devices so that we can increase that and so that houses that have more than one student living in them can have multiple devices available. So we've given out just over 1,600 devices at this point, and that does not include the thousands of devices that had already been given out at the Revia High School through the one-to-one program. A big concern of ours, as has been a concern across the state, has been internet connectivity. And so when teachers and parents and admini-- sorry, teachers and administrators were making connections with families and with students, that was one of the questions we asked them to look into. And right now, we have 13 students, or 13 families, who don't have internet connections, and you can see the breakdown by school. We are working with them and the City of Revia 311 program and Comcast to try to get those folks connected. The principals have been taking the lead on that. And the one caveat I'll put on that number is that we don't have the full numbers in from Revia High School yet because they still have about 140 students that they need to connect with. Actually, that's down by 10 today, so 130 or 136, I think it is, students that they still need to connect with. So that number could go up by a little bit. Because the kids have the one-to-one program at the high school level, we feel like you or of them might have this problem unless it's a pass-through bill issue. And that's something that we have been working with Comcast to move around, and they've been helpful with us to make sure that families with kids, or homes with kids living in them, despite any kind of pass-through status, can still get logged in and get access to the internet. So I will say that they've been helpful. We've been working with them on that. The next piece is communication. And as we were doing the handouts of materials and supplies and all of that, we've also tried to do a one-to-one contact communication with the parents of every child or the kids themselves at the upper level. And here's where you see, Revia High School has 146. It's actually down to 136 as of today, which means that we've made connections with 98% of our students, which I think is pretty impressive. At most of the other schools you can see, four at Garfield Elementary is the next highest number. But the administration has done an incredible job, working with teacher teams and social workers have done a huge amount of this work. Translators have been instrumental in connecting with families where English might not be their first language. So I think we've made strides in that area and will continue to work on making sure that we have those links going forward. In terms of engagement, this is where our next bit of work needs to focus. Almost all of our teachers are doing some Zooms at particular times, so kids in Ms. Kelly's second grade class know that every Tuesday at 10:30 and every Thursday at 10:30, she's going to be Zooming, and kids in some other teacher's high school English class know a time they can expect their teacher to be on. The focus of those sessions, some of it is around instruction and learning. Some of it is around checking in and making sure there aren't any questions on the assignments that have been posted. It's optional for kids to join. We very much want to keep a focus on asynchronous work and make sure it feels to the kids and to the families like they can participate when it's comfortable for them to do so. And, you know, leave it more on our responsibility, on the school's responsibility, to connect to them when they're ready to and when they can. We recognize particularly with families that have multiple kids and only one device, it's hard if two or three kids are supposed to be on at the same time on a particular day. And so we're trying to avoid putting those kinds of roadblocks in front of kids. At the same time, the teachers want the kids to know and the parents to know when they're available, so they're setting up some synchronous times. But as I said, it's more of a voluntary kind of program. When we have encountered kids that are not connecting really at all, the administration has stepped in and reached out to those parents and helped try to figure out what the roadblock is and try to remove it. And the staff has used Google Calendars, particularly at the secondary level, so that the math team is all on at the same time, and that way they're not competing with the English team. They know what their time is. And having to see a calendar means everybody can see when there's already something scheduled and try to avoid that. I have to say that all of the teachers, and we did our check-ins with the principals this week, they have said every single one of them is just doing an unbelievable job. They're going above and beyond and really connecting with the kids in a lot of different ways. They're giving a variety of different assignments. They're being flexible with kids and not trying to put up barriers like, oh, that was supposed to be last Friday, now I'm not taking it. You know, they're really trying to work with kids and work with families and help make sure the kids learn what they're supposed to know as the primary concern. The parents have been unbelievable, particularly with our special needs students. They've been joining Zooms with the rest of, with the teacher or the rest of the class, and they've been really helping a lot with translations in particular. As have our actual translators. They have been instrumental in helping us connect with the families that we were struggling to connect with over the first few weeks. And as one principal described it, those families have become like the model now that the connection is made and they have worked out whatever glitches they were encountering that were preventing them from engaging. They've really, they've really been unbelievable in helping the kids stay connected. And then the administrators are hosting multiple meetings. They typically have a staff meeting once a week for a certain length of time, typically about an hour. But they're also connecting with the teachers through their PLGs and using that time to identify kids that we might need to support a little bit more and then using that as an opportunity to outreach to those families. So our next thing really is to get more kids fully engaged. It really varies by grade level. In some cases, we're seeing 90% of kids engaged all the time. In other cases, we're seeing 50%, and in other cases, even less than that. So the principals are focused this week on really helping more kids get engaged. And at the secondary level, they're going to be talking to the kids about what they do to make sure they earn credit to move on to the next grade level and making sure they're meeting that criteria. So any questions on the remote learning plan?
Any members have any questions?
I just have one question, Diane. Are you aware or do you know if there are any students that have no devices at all? Have we made any, you know, are we aware of that?
We were aware of two students who had no device at all, and that was taken care of this week.
Great, thank you.
Would be those high school kids that we haven't connected with.
And the fourth. Thank, yep. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Kelly, you want to continue?
I think Stacy has her hand up, Brian.
Yeah.
Sorry, Brian. Diane, just wondering, it might even be too early, but maybe you're already talking about it. What is the grading process going to look like? Is it a pass fail? Is, or do you envision some other way?
Yeah, well, we're calling it has met competency or has not yet met competency. But it's a way of, I mean, pass fail just sounds so pejorative in some ways, I think. So we're doing has met competency or has not yet met competency. And, you know, one of our areas of focus right now for next year and for the summer, although it's questionable if we're going to be able to do any work over the summer, but we're starting to look forward to what are we going to do for the kids who have not yet met competency to make sure that yeah, so that's, that's, that's where we are with that. But a lot of people think of it like a pass fail. And the guidance that we gave in our remote learning plan is that if kids successfully complete 60% of the work that's put out for them, then we would consider that as meeting competency.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
This is Ferenti. So I can't, just to be clear, I can't see if people have their hands up. So Diane, if maybe, are they, when they, people put their hands up, is it going to you, Dr. Kelly?
Uh, no, they're just literally physically putting their hand up.
Okay, I can't, uh, okay, I can't see that.
Okay.
All we can see is the PowerPoint right now.
Right.
Well, you can click on to see more, but also if anyone is not sure, down below you can press reactions and it automatically puts a hand up over your head so that they might see that too.
I can see all of you. That's funny. Okay.
All right, Diane, my question is this. Is there a possibility that kids will be held back if they don't meet the competency part of the assignments?
So yes, it's the short answer. And I'll talk about this in two phases, at the elementary level and at the secondary level. At the elementary level, teachers have typically started to have conversations with parents about retention in March. And a large part of that conversation typically happens at the parent conferences at the end of trimester two, which is March. Now, the closure happened before we were able to have those parent conferences. So that presented some complications, but the teachers and the administrators have been working this week, they started before vacation, and then working this week to communicate with those families. Those are retentions that I would look at as predating the closure. But they'll be continuing to have those conversations, we're not looking at the school closure as being a reason for a student to be retained. It would really be the cumulative look at the body of their work over the whole course of the school year. And to a certain extent, that's true at the secondary level as well. Because it would be, for example, for a typical middle schooler, if they were doing great quarters one, two, and three, and then just quarter four here, they didn't quite engage, then they should have enough credit to be, to move on in that course work. On the other hand, if they passing quarters one, two, and three, and then they didn't engage, then they probably will not get credit for that course. And promotional requirements at the middle school and at the high school are based on which courses you pass and how many credits you earn and all of those pieces which will still apply. So basically, if a student was doing well before and they continue to do their work, they should have no worries at all. If they were doing well before and they're struggling now, they still shouldn't worry too much. But if they were doing poorly before and they're continuing to do poorly, then that's a concern in terms of passing the class and being promoted.
Thank you.
I just, I want to comment. I attended a Zoom for CPAC last week, and I want to say thank you to Josh and some of our other special needs teachers who participated. And it was great to know, I got an opportunity to ask some questions and learned a lot. Went on like the Beachmont website to see some of the remote learning that they're doing with the students there. And I also have to say, there's also, I think, a parent of a child who will be attending but is not attending yet. And Josh had brought up that they're still able to go, anyone can go online to get any kind of that remote learning and websites to help them. And I think that's a great piece.
Great. So I'll go on with my report. And so the next item on the superintendent's report is the budget update. And, you know, a lot of this is very much up in the air. I think that everybody knows that the state of the state finances is not what we thought it was a month or two months ago, and certainly the governor and our other elected officials have been talking about the impact that COVID-19 is going to have on the economy. And so we need to start thinking about the impact that that's going to have on the school. And what we're starting to hear at the state level, as I'm sure all the school committee members have been hearing as well, is that there's going to be a significant, if not a complete, pullback of the Student Opportunity Act fund. Naturally, that's very disappointing. We spent a lot of time this winter working with families and working with students, working with parents, working with other community stakeholders, working with teachers and working with administrators to set a new vision for the district and to use that vision to set a budget and set some priorities for how we might spend any Student Opportunity Act funding that we did get. And I was really excited about some of the progress I was thinking that we were going to be able to make, especially in terms of putting folks in place to help increase our student engagement. We had talked about creating some new administrative positions to help the elementary level. We are, we have enrollment upwards of 700 and 800 students, but only two administrators working in that, in those buildings. We had talked about some of the things that the kids wanted, like having some funding for AP exam, increasing elective. The high school students actually took the survey, and we plan to include three new elections in the program for next year. We're still hoping to do that if we can work it out with existing staff, but that's a question mark right now. The kids had asked for more extracurricular activities and for more field trips, and we had budgeted for all of that stuff. We were looking at adding 49 teaching positions and adding about 25 paraprofessional positions to help out in our kindergarten classrooms. We were looking to increase the number of translators, both that work in the district full-time and also setting aside some funding to have more translators at our meetings in order to make those more accessible to a greater number of our parents and community members. A lot of great priorities that I think were going to push us forward. And sad to say, I think that just about all of that, if not all of it, is going to need to go on the back burner at least for a little while. I think the prudent thing for us to do right now is to hold steady and not create any new positions or fill any new positions or plan on spending any of that funding until we can get some word back from the House and Senate, which in an unprecedented move, are actually working together on a joint budget. Their timeline for that is that they're hoping to have it out at the end of June or early July. Reality there might be more like the middle of July or the end of July. And that has implications for our school budget because, as you know, the school committee needs to vote a budget at least for the month of July before July 1st. So I mean, I, if I try not to be entirely doom and gloom, I will say it's the end of April. We have the whole month of May and a good chunk of June to try to figure this out. I know that Mr. Ferenti, as the Chair of the Ways and Mean Committee, is calling for a meeting, and that'll be happening soon. Another bright spot is that we've been hearing that a priority might be to try to maintain some of the funding for low income. In particular, how students are counted as either low income or not, or economically disadvantaged or not. And we are working at the state level to try to advocate for that. That for us is important because a big chunk of our funding would come from those low-income counts. So we're following that information as closely as we can. But I do think that, that we need to pause on creating any new positions at this time. And now I will fire. There are questions or comments from the committee.
Any members? Mr. Ferenti.
Diane, I mean, we've pretty much talked about this. I mean, I think that when we do set up a meeting, and it's going to be soon, that we have to have like three or four different alternatives to see which one sort of follows what we have to do here. I mean, I know we're shooting at a moving target here, and we might have to vote, you know, July and August, maybe month-by-month budget, but I think we got to be prepared the best way we can, you know, put something together that, you know, we'd have different alternatives. Obviously, we can't cover everything, but we got to cover as much as we can, so at least we have something going forward. And hopefully, you know, things will work out for us.
Yeah, time will tell. It's definitely difficult financially to everybody. It's difficult for our families. For the state. I think no one is looking forward to what's coming in terms of finances.
Agreed.
Agreed.
All right, next up, food services. And I'd like to give a shout out to Cheryl Cole and Arima, who have just been incredible. All of our cafeteria workers, cafeteria managers, the full-time staff, the part-time staff, all of them have just been incredible over the last seven weeks. And, you know, I think the data that you see on this slide supports this. In the last seven weeks, we've given over 60,000 meals. And, you know, seven weeks includes this week, so we don't have Friday's numbers included in that yet. I'm sure we'll eclipse, you know, 65,000 by the end of the week. We are doing food pickups on Monday through Friday, sorry, Monday and Friday, not Monday through Friday, Monday and Friday, between 10:30 and 12:30. And they can be picked up, I wrote this wrong, I don't know what I was thinking of when I wrote this, but this should say for pickup at the RPS in the Beachmont.
RHS.
And then if you want, sorry, RHS in Beachmont.
RPS website.
12:30. But if you need to register for meals, and I need to emphasize that if people need delivery, we really need for there to be a need there. So we want to help families who can't get out either because somebody in the family has COVID and everybody is self-isolating or self-quarantining, or if there is a significant disability that prevents a parent or somebody from coming to pick up the food. We have some capacity. It's all volunteer-driven, and I have to thank committee woman Stacy Rizzo for taking the lead on this. We do have some volunteers to help those families that need it by delivering food to the homes. And again, that would be on Monday mornings and Friday mornings between 10:30 and 12:30. But I also wanted to highlight the families, some of the other pieces and programs that are going on throughout the city. The Rami Mosh Academy has become a hub for the city's food services program. And any resident can come and get a grab-and-go meal at 9:00 AM every day. And it's a, it's a pull-up and pick-up, so you can just pull up in your car and take your bag, grab, go. That's, that's at 9:00 o'clock while supplies last. And I understand that today they had a great day, but they didn't run out of food. So there's definitely enough there for people to go buy. You can also walk up. If you're not driving, you're welcome to walk up to that site and retrieve some food and take it on, on your way with you. So that's another great program that I wanted to highlight. And finally, there's also additional information on our website, on the Revia Public Schools website, and also on the city website. There's a food bank that's happening every Wednesday night at the Rami Mosh Academy. And I know that that's a popular one and that they have sometimes run out of, out of food at that. And I know that that's a popular one and that they have sometimes run out of, out of food at that. They haven't quite had enough of the demand. But still, that's something that people can see as a resource if they need, if they need food. That's someplace that they can go. And if you look at the city's website, or you look at the Revia Public Schools website, you'll see some other resources. So I strongly urge families to do that. Any questions? Does anything you want to add to that? Are there any other resources folks want to highlight? Stacy?
No, I, I just want an opportunity, yes, Cheryl Cole in that group has been absolutely extraordinary. And I have to say, the people volunteering are phenomenal. They're giving up their time. They're taking away from their family. We probably have about a hundred and sixty deliveries. And compared to, it seems like every Monday and Friday, it's like really windy and raining. All the volunteers are still coming back. So I am grateful to all of them and Cheryl Cole and her team. And it just, it makes life easier and these, you know what's really amazing? I did, the first day I did deliveries because we just didn't have enough people. And went home and I was crying. I think I cry a lot now lately, but every time I went and sent a text to say, your, your meals are here, either the kids, the kids and the families came to the window and they'd be knocking on the window, waving, saying thank you. Or with all the texts, the thirty-two families, every single one of them came back with, I, I thank you and God bless you. So it was really, really touching. And, you know, we know there were people out there that needed. But in, in, they're just so grateful. So it has been worth every second. But every frizzy here, it's been worth it.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ty.
Yes, I would like to add to that. This has been a time of extraordinary difficulty and a, and a few bad things, but extraordinary volunteerism, people like Mrs. Rizzo and others. When the food bank at the church, the food pantry ran out of food and money, we sent out an appeal to the retired teachers, to the Beauchamp Improvement Committee, to the Historic Society, and to individuals, and they received back huge donations, a thousand dollars from the Beauchamp Improvement Committee. Individuals gave it. Checks came to them from Virginia and Florida and the other New England states. People asking, what can we do to help? We can't go there. And around those of us who are of a certain age, who cannot be put ourselves out there, can do it other ways, and all of the ones who could did. And makes me very proud of our school system and of our city. Thank you.
Brian?
Ms. Sinella?
Through you to School Committee Woman Rizzo. On the deliveries, are people expected to sign up? How do you know who's getting deliveries? How, how do you establish that?
There is a sign up on the site itself, and it's put into a Google, not Excel, but a Google Sheet of all the new ones. Once you sign up, you're just on there. You don't have to sign up every single day. And then what Josh has been doing is letting me know on Sundays prior to Mondays if there's any new additional people, and also on Thursdays, so let me know if there's any new people on Friday. So it's a one-time sign up and you stay on it. There are times that people know, like our principals know our families. And I know the Hill School, she contacted me with two families that couldn't get on. One didn't even have any internet. So sometimes principals might get to us and let us know who might be in need, and we just add them to the list.
Yeah, the link is on the RPS website under, if you go into the news section, it says, you know, you can click here to register for food delivery. And so people can go there. As Stacy mentioned, we do have to close it down so that the list can get out and get distributed to the volunteers. So before Monday morning deliveries, we close it at six PM on Sunday night. And that way, they, everything can get sorted out. People can figure out who's going to what address, all of that. And then we reopen it Monday afternoon and stay open until Thursday night, where we close it to prep for the Friday morning deliveries.
Another question is, they're still getting food for Saturday and Sunday, so five, uh, seven days?
Yes, Fred, they get, so on Monday, they'll get food for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So whether we're delivering or they're picking up themselves, they'll take one bag per child, and that will contain for breakfast, another bag for lunch, another bag for days of milk. And then on Friday, it's for three days.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members? All right.
Okay. New RHS, this is an exciting one. So I think that you, I think, I think you all know that the Board of the MSBA voted us into feasibility a couple of weeks ago, which is very exciting. What this means is we can begin the process of first selecting an owner's project manager and a design team and looking at ideas on where the new school might be cited. So we'll, we'll be working a lot with MSBA through this process. We, we have to spend the next several months, and believe it or not, it's a pretty extensive process. Maybe the mayor can talk about this after I do. But we're shooting to have our paperwork done and in so that we can be in, on the board meeting in September to have our OPM selection process start. Altogether, it takes about two years, but to get on their September agenda, we actually have to have a whole bunch of documents done and completed to the board by early July. So it sounds like September is a long way off, but it's the way they pass the different pieces of information we have to give them that kind of dictates the timeline. There was an opportunity that we could have got on their August agenda, but we would have had to have information to them next week that we just don't have prepared yet and that we don't have the capacity with everything else that we're dealing with right now to try to take focus away from making sure kids are engaged and fed and remote learning plans are working and, and all of that at the same time. So we, we are, we are aiming for their September meeting. Altogether, as I mentioned, it'll take about two years to go through feasibility with the idea being that at the end of that two-year process, we will have OPM in place. We will have a design team in place. We will know where the school's going to be located. And from the other design team, we'll spend about a year developing the designs for the new building. So we have scheduled a meeting with the Building Committee for next week. And we'll be doing some of that, some of that legwork that needs to be done in advance. We'll be starting that with them next week. And then passing out to different members of the Building Committee different aspects of the work that needs to be gathered and all of the information we need to collect and, and getting that work done. And also, this has been on my radar for about a week and a half. I just haven't had, been able to put my attention to it. But we need to reconvene the Visioning Team for Revia High School. We had had a great first meeting where we talked about some aspects of the learning plan, and we're going to go from there to talking about what the program of, the current program of studies looks like and focusing a little bit more on how we want to change that and different pieces that we want to see brought into a new high school. So we need to reengage those folks. We did miss the scheduled meeting because of the closure. I think it's prudent at this time to start looking toward more virtual meetings because we still want that work to progress. So a little, a little bright light in an otherwise dismal way of being right now, I think.
Any members have any questions?
Go.
And then the last piece of the superintendent's report, and this is a quick one. I just want to give a committee, give the committee an update. We did send out a request for resumes for the Assistant Superintendent of People Personnel Services. That's unfortunately Dr. Vidal's position, which we hate to see him leaving, but we, the resumes are in. The application period has closed. I'm going to be working this, the end of this week or early next week to identify which committee members and which community members want to participate in that interview process. We're going to have to do it virtually, of course. But we, we have looked over the resumes. We need to go through them and verify some credentials and do pieces like that. But on first look-over, there are four really strong, interesting candidates, I think, that we should be looking at. So that, that's, that's a good space to be in, and I'm going to be meeting with Dr. Mulcahy tomorrow. And we'll be looking at credential verification before we try to come together with maybe four or five candidates that the, that the committee would want to interview and then take forward from there and start the narrowing process. So that hopefully, by the time Dr. Vidal leaves us at the end of June, we will have a successor named. And I'll just say out to the people who are watching at home, if somebody listening is interested in participating in that, please do email me and we'll take it from there.
Okay, any members have any questions?
It'll be hard to replace him, of course, but I, I trust that we'll find someone who will be almost equally as good, and then we'll make him as good. Whoops.
All right, we'll, we'll move on to the Student Representative Report. Lea, are you ready?
Thank you. So to start off, I want to say all of the students are dealing with some really unusual circumstances right now. And for a lot of students, this means still working to kind of figure out what this means for them and what plans they may have had for the rest of the school year. At the high school, there's currently a lot of work being done in order to support students at this time. With the May first college deposit deadline only a few days away, are substituting virtual accepted students events and college tours before they make their decisions. And in the meantime, the seniors keep getting more and more impressive admissions results. So far, we have five Ivy League acceptances and multiple acceptances to Northeastern University, Boston College, Boston University, and many more. And to kind of celebrate this, the Senior Student Council has created an Instagram page that showcases the future plans of this year's seniors. Multiple teachers and administrators have already used the page to congratulate students since it's not possible to do so in person at this time. The page can be found at RHS 2020 Future. A survey was also recently sent out to the senior class to try to plan for the rescheduling of events such as prom and graduation. And the council is attempting to be creative in all options that they plan to consider. The council has also begun a project where students can write letters or create posters for the staff at the Jack Satterhouse, which has been going through an especially difficult time with COVID-19. And the Student Senate, as well as other student government, have been working to address and create mental health awareness campaigns on social media to try to alleviate some of the stress that many students are currently facing while stuck at home. Many students have been compiling videos and making social media posts dedicated to the previous school year or the past four years to try to say goodbye as best as they can for now. And these are the most recent updates from the student body at this time. Thank you.
And I'll just add that one of the things that we were talking to the senior class advisors, sorry, the senior class officers with their advisors last week, we did a Zoom with them and with Dr. Perella and Mrs. Colora. And so one of the things we asked them to get feedback from their classmates on in the survey is how they want to handle graduation. So, and they're looking at that from two different scenarios. One is if we could do some kind of a graduation ceremony in August. And then the alternative is if we can't, if we're still in a place where we're being told that we can't, that we can't gather in large groups at that time, then, you know, what should we do?
All right, any members have any questions or comments? Ms. Rizzo?
I just wanted to say, I, I'm really proud of the Class 2020. I've been following all their social media. And some of their ideas have been phenomenal. And I know they did the survey, and I just want to make sure it's the student voice at the end that is listened to and taken care of. I, I know, I know there's going to have to be some professional administration overlook, but at the end, I want to see it through the student's voices' eyes. That didn't make sense, did it? Student's voice. So that's what my hopes are. And I have met with a couple of them a few times and did see, I was with their class advisor Monday. And, you know, there's some great ideas and they're working on it, and we just have to be hopeful that they deserve. They were robbed and they deserve all that is good in this world.
No doubt.
All right, any other members?
No, I, I'd just like to say that I certainly agree with what Stacy had to say. I have been so proud of the kids and their parents who are feeling the pain of it. I mean, it just seems so unfair that all of us have had our own time as seniors and, and and this, these one kids in this one pandemic. It's just so sad for them, but they are dealing with it very much in an adult way. And, and I, I agree, we should hear their voices. I'm very proud to see around in my neighborhood the signs of the seniors outside their houses that say, you know, Class of 2020 and, and the picture of the graduate of 2020. It's whatever we can do for them, whatever way we can ease that, that we can fill that hollow in their hearts. I think we should do, not only we should, but we will do everything we can to fill that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and we do have a meeting, a next meeting with the class officers on May fourth. And they said that they will have the results of the student survey by then. And that's when they're going to offer us the guidance that we're looking for on how they want us to proceed.
Great.
Stacy?
Diane, just to add, and maybe you can help out at your end. When talking to a couple of the students, I asked them, we can't forget, as much as we love our Revia High students, we also have CCOs that graduate also. That's part of the ceremonies. So I did reach out and ask them to maybe even contact Principal Magno because they should have some insight on what's going on also and some input. So if you could just, you know, it's important.
And Diane, it would be great if you can share their ideas with us after you get them because everyone in the city is all, you know, about wanting these seniors to have something. So the more information we can give people when we run into them, you know, virtually as they send us, you know, emails and text messages asking what's going on with the seniors, you know, Facebook messages, everyone's asking. So when you get those ideas from the Student Council, it would be great to share them with us. So when you get those ideas from the student council, it would be great to share them with us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Diane, Mr. Francie.
Diane, I noticed that you said that we're looking at doing something in August. Is there any possibility that we could do something maybe earlier, maybe in July? Is there a possibility?
Yeah, I mean, I think right now we don't know what the summer's going to bring. And I think that it's all about waiting and see what the, what the, what the mayor's guidance is and what the governor's guidance is and what our medical professionals are telling us around social distancing at that time. Just my gut is telling me the earliest they're going to tell us we can, we might be able to do anything would be awesome. And even that, I think, is a little bit of a long shot. But you know, people have had some, the kids have had some great ideas. Like one of them asked if there was something we could do with Revere Beach where it's so long. Like, could we really social distance but still do something if everybody was spaced out in a line along the edge of the beach? So you know, that's something to think about.
Oh, that is, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're in a unique position that way. A lot of communities don't have that resource.
Right.
That's a great idea.
We even, we had talked about it yesterday with the kids about, I had talked about Broadway and maybe put nexus every six feet in line in the streets of Broadways on both sides with the students in their cap and gowns and then perhaps doing parade floats. So like one parade floats could be the class officers, the valedictorian, salutatorian. Next one, perhaps the mayor, the principal. And then Diane, if you have nothing to do, you can go on that float. And then maybe the third one with Revere TV that can record everything. And then maybe after that, a parade of families in their cars with messages on their cars for all the students and just go down the whole length of Broadway. So it's like, there's a lot of possibilities, but again, it's what the students want. And whatever they want is what I'm going to support and fight for.
Yeah. Yeah, and the one thing that we talked to the kids about, well, this too, is making sure that whatever decisions we make are accessible to all of them. So if we set something up that requires a car, that might preclude some students. So we want to think about that and really, if we can't find a solution to whatever the hurdle might be, then figure out a way that we can celebrate without the hurdles. So, but the kids are doing a great job. They're working together, they're talking to their classmates and we'll take our lead from them.
Okay, any other members have any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public speak. I know we got a number of, of email communications. Dr. Kelly, were we going to have somebody read them off or how do you want to handle?
Yeah, I believe Mrs. Rizzo, as the secretary, was going to read the, read the statement from each person one at a time. And then the committee could, I don't know, comment, comment or answer. I was able to see most of them today. You know, some of them are a little bit hard to answer in this format because they focus on more broad spectrum ideas. So it might be a challenge to some of them. We might need to refer to a communications committee or ask, ask a subgroup of the committee to respond to. I don't know, but one thing, one thing that we could do, Stacy, there were some additional questions that didn't.
I have all the questions. And my suggestion also is, and a lot of them are repetitious. So I mean, we'll, you know, we'll try to answer it the first time and then, you know, move on. And even though each question is very important, there might be some that we might, because we're just getting these questions. So it would have been, you know, time, you know, we haven't talked among ourselves on what, you know, our answers could be. And basically, we can only really answer what is actually in our positions or what you can do back Diane, as far as what we already know about the budget and other things.
Yeah.
So, um, okay, so this first one, um, oh, someone just wrote something nice, but it wasn't from ballistic questions. So, "How does a school committee handle a request if approached by parents or interest groups?" So, which one of my lovely colleagues would like to answer that? Or do you have an opinion? Because I think we're all into, we all do it differently. We all have our own personalities. So does anyone want to share this?
Would you repeat the question?
The question is, "How does the school committee handle a request?" If, if approached by parents or interest groups? Susan, did you want to add?
Yep, I mean, I'll add in too, as well as the others. I mean, obviously, we're all approached, you know, all the time now, more recently. It's just through social media, but you know, obviously when we're out and about in the community. And depending on the request or, you know, the concern or, you know, a complaint or whatever it may be, I always, you know, go directly to Diane Kelly to find out the appropriate person that, you know, that request should go to. Because, you know, there are different, so many different moving parts in the school system. So, you know, I always take the person's name and phone number and email address who asked me a question or has a concern. I contact the superintendent of schools and then I go back to that community member and give them the response of, you know, who they would need to contact or what the, you know, answer to their question is. That's my approach when I'm, you know, approached with questions.
And for the most part, that's the way it should be also, so with all of us. If it's not, you know, just on a personal nature, we should be directing them to the appropriate person. Carol?
Well, just of course, by law, the school committee sets policies. I mean, we do not execute these policies in the day-to-day operations of the school system. So that's exactly how I operate when someone, I ask, I listen to people and try to understand what their problem is. If they're, and then pass it on to the appropriate people. I always go to the superintendent first because there should be no surprises to the superintendent. And, and then if there is any way that the parent or the person wants me to follow up, I do. And most of the time, the, that, there is a request to follow up. And sometimes it's a follow-up again and again. And that's okay too, because we're also there to listen. We do represent the community and, and we bring the problems that the community has to the various members of the school department who are responsible for addressing those issues.
Okay, I want to apologize. I am going to back up for a minute because I, I got ahead of myself in there. There is a letter preempting the questions. And it says, "To the members of the school committee, I would like to have my comments read either by me or school committee member during the public comment period at the April 28th meeting. I think many of us are concerned that Revere will not get the promised funds for next school year given the state loss in revenue for the COVID-19 crisis. I believe it is essential that we reevaluate our priorities, how to spend the money that we do receive. In the event that Revere will most directly, oh, receive less than was anticipated, I urge the committee to prioritize funding those positions that will most directly impact our students and families. Parents, teachers, and community members have spoken very decisively about our priorities for hiring and additional teachers, parent professionals, translators, and family liaisons. It is more important now than ever to continue the process of including community input when making these important decisions. If we have to make choices for positions to hire, please prioritize educators and direct services, direct service providers over additional administrators, especially an additional assistant superintendent. And that's, thank you, Jean Agaro, who is a teacher and is the second vice president for our ATA. Diane, do you want to comment on that or does someone on the committee?
Well, I think the superintendent should comment first.
Yeah, you know, I, I think I said under, under the budget piece that we really need to put everything on this point. And that's the fiscally responsible thing to do until we get more information. Um, I'll tell you that I, I was thinking a lot, I've been thinking nonstop about this actually for the last several weeks. And if you had asked me yesterday what I thought we should prioritize, I think I would have said that we should prioritize the kindergarten paras and prioritize the translators, sorry, the parent liaisons that we wanted to have in every school. But the, you know, the more I think about it, and you'll, you'll see like the questions that we got from public speak today, which I had the opportunity to read most of them earlier today. I don't know if any of the committee members did, but it's a, it's a lot of parents who are advocating strongly for increased parental input and making sure that parents are able to access our school system and our structures and our committees and our, and all of those different pieces. It's evident to me in reading the questions that despite the efforts we have made around having, you know, community input on the new high school, which I talked about earlier, and having the community input, which over 100 people attended on the SBA funding. And the work that we've done, Stacy, you've been part of on trying to establish a parent engagement policy. And all of these other pieces, all of the work that principals have done around community engagement, the community showcase that we do every year, we started that three years ago. This has been a priority for the district. Parenting community engagement has been a priority for the district for five years now. And I think that we've made some strides, but it's clear in listening to what others have to say that it's not enough. And they are not finding ways to work with us collaboratively. And when I think about that, the more I think about that, the more I think it's critical to have an administrator at the superintendent level, somebody who's working right beside the school committee, to make sure that these parents are getting, are being engaged and are having a voice and are having a say in, in how things operate. I think that part of the disconnect right now is it's a full-time job. I think, I think you'll see that when we get through some of the public speak questions. It's a, it's a full-time, important job that we need somebody with a high level of administrative power to oversee and to make sure that it is really filtering down at the school level, in the classroom level, and everywhere else. So I don't know, I'm really torn right now. I still feel like right now we can't fill any position. But the more I heard from the parents today who emailed on the public speak portion, the more I'm thinking that a high-level administrator is needed to do this work.
Okay, I'm going to move on. Oh, look, they didn't like that answer. So another question was, "With how much time in advance does the school committee post a monthly meeting agenda and we are how to easily, to find it easily?" And I think we've explained this numerous times, but does anyone want to jump in?
Stacy.
Michael, go for it.
Yeah, well, first of all, it's posted 48 hours. It's on our website, it's on revier.org. And anybody has any opportunity to speak at the public speaking part of the program, if they want to put something on there, they have to go to the superintendent and she decides what to do it. So it's not, we don't want to hear things, but it's a public document. So everybody can find it, it's not any hidden agenda there. Everything is cut and dry. And that's how we base our agenda and account, agenda for the month.
Okay, and that's by law too, so they know.
If I could just add to that, the, you, when you guys set your meetings, which you typically do in January and in June, they're always posted on the Revere Public Schools calendar. So the dates of the meetings are up for six months at a time. It's just the agendas that don't get posted until, as Michael said, 48 hours into the meeting.
Okay, um, and here's one, what are the things that the school committee does or is doing to build a relationship with the community, parents, and families? You know, I'll go in there and I think Susan will agree and everyone else will agree. We all have different personalities, we all see things differently. But I can say that each and every one of us are always available to anyone in the community. We attend everything possible, whether it's a school function, a city function. I don't think there's any one of us that would ever not go to a function that's held in, in Revere for any given reason. And that's what's so nice about, about Revere. As big of a city as we are, we will be the first ones, along with our city councillors and our government, will be at any function whatsoever. Does anyone want to add to that?
I mean, I agree, Stacy, you know what I mean? We do make ourselves available to the community. We go to, you know, we all try, if we all can't go, we try to at least have, you know, one or two of us to represent the committee when we all can't attend. We go to the school events and as Diane just said, all the different events that we have through the year, we're all going through that. We've gone to the visioning committee meetings, all of us were there for those. We go to the multicultural nights, we come to like the year-end events for all the kids. So we're there, we're accessible. We hope that people feel that they can just come to us with any questions or concerns that they have when they see us out in the community. So, you know, I believe as a whole, we all do our best to connect with everyone. Anyone else?
Well, you know, I certainly agree because we all try to go to every single experience that the kids are enjoying, no matter whether it's academic or social or celebratory, we attend them all. And as you said, if we couldn't, if some can't go, then because there's a conflict, the other people fill in. But also, I mean, our emails and phone numbers are published on the city website and on the school website. And we're really all accessible. I, I find that people will stop me in any public area and ask. And, and I think we're all like that, no matter where we are, if we're grocery shopping or doing whatever it is that we're doing. And that's, that's something that, that people do frequently. It seems that there's always someone who comes up and I am always pleased. I, I, I think that maybe some people out there think that we really don't want to hear. But I, and I know everybody else is still really, is pleased to have that connection. Because if this, you know, we've tried really hard to do our jobs. And so if you think we're not doing it right, I mean, we really want to make it right. So feel free to tell us, to speak to us about anything and to have a conversation with us at any time and any place. And if it's a place where, where it's not appropriate to talk right then and there, then we can arrange for a date and a time subsequently so that we can connect. Because we're, we're all here for the kids.
Can I also say, we love being invited to things. And we do have families and we might have to do, but like Susan said, if a couple of us can't go, a couple will try to go. So to be invited to our PTO meetings, or, you know, I've never got an invitation to a WE group. I didn't know what it was. Or even the Revere Education Justice Alliance until maybe last October, I never heard of them. I had to ask someone about them. So, you know, we like to be included in things. So if you know of groups that are having something, feel free to invite us. It, it's a community. So we work for all the students in the city and families and the education process. So we want to know everything about everyone. So if anyone has invites, hey, please feel free. If you have food, I'll be there even faster.
Well, I was just going to mention something about that, Stacy, because this is normally the time of the year that, you know, we're invited to the Ramadan events and the breaking of the fast. And like, we're honored when we get those invitations. And, you know, like, you know, we usually communicate with each other and, you know, try to make sure if someone has a conflict in their schedule, that, you know, maybe just. if someone has a conflict in their schedule, that, you know, maybe just two or three of us will show up, but we are actually honored to get those invitations and to be asked to be part of such a celebration. So, you know, again, we try our best.
And then someone wrote, can the school committee invite parents to monthly meetings through the phone call in multiple languages? And I will say, right now, just about two days ago, Zoom has been working on a translating piece. That's still a work in progress, and hopefully by our next meeting, there'll be something that we can do to help those, because I realize on the phone, it's very difficult. Hopefully Zoom will have something in place for our next meeting, because we definitely don't want to exclude anyone. Here's one, this is from Sandy Wright, Revere Youth in Action, thank you for all your work during this difficult time. Oh, thank you for acknowledging that, Sandy, we really appreciate it. With this year's funding for the SOA potentially in jeopardy, what positions will be prioritized for hiring? Diane?
Yeah, you know, I think I did speak to that a little bit already, so I don't know that I need to reiterate.
Thank you. And how, you know, again, with the increased translation, family engagement related to Essa, Desi guidelines, and racial equity be addressed in the hiring priorities? And again, we're not going to be hiring until we have more input, I guess.
But, well, I would say that even with the position for the Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services, and in our routine hiring of teachers, paraprofessionals, translators, all staff that work in the schools, we have prioritized finding people who represent our students better than the majority of our staff currently do. And so, that's been a priority in hiring, when all things are equal, we're looking for a candidate of color, or a candidate who speaks another language and can help us make those connections with families. That's been, that's been one of our priorities for five years as well, since we wrote the last school and district improvement plan, and that continues to be a priority. We had some of our outreach plans this year that were going to go into place, including attending a job fair at Howard University had to be delayed because of COVID. We still were able to get a bunch of resumes from that, and, you know, if money comes through and we are in a position where we are hiring folks, then that's the list that we're going to go to first. So, that's still a huge priority for us.
Okay, this is from Ina Toll, she's a parent at the high school. How can parents be included in the decision-making process regarding online schooling and the challenges we face due to COVID-19?
Stacy, I believe that the parents were included, am I correct, Diane, that it was open to the public for comments, the online learning platform?
You are correct, it was a brief window, I will say that, but it was open for two days, we messaged all parents and asked them to give feedback. We actually had 120 people comment on the remote learning before it was finalized. And, you know, some of them were teachers, but about a third of them were actually students, and about 25% were parents. So, we did have some.
Bless you.
Bless you, who's ever sneezing, God bless you.
So, and then the next one, finding out, knowing what parents are thinking and what their needs are, they do let us know, and we feel that we're all open to listening to any of them, like we said earlier. How does a district provide quality education for a diverse student population, the gifted and talented, the average student, special ed, the academically challenged ELLs? Thank you, Ina, for that one, but we give them a quality education no matter what. But I will let someone else address that.
And I, you know, I think that's one of those questions, like I said, that's like really this big, and probably this isn't the right forum for that, but I can certainly reach out to Ina and schedule a time that the two of us can meet and talk about whatever her concerns are in those areas. I think that we've done a lot, we've almost doubled the number of kids taking advanced placement courses at the high school over the last seven years, which is pretty incredible. In addition to that, we've increased the number of exams that they're taking, and we've increased the pass rates. Students at Revere High School actually surpassed the state averages on the percentage of students earning a three, earning what they call a qualifying score, which is a three, four, or five. So, we've done some pretty cool things for our advanced students, and I think that, as Uleah mentioned earlier, the colleges that they are attending speak to their advanced skill areas. We've also done a lot with our special needs, our English language learner students. Two things that I'm really proud of, one thing in particular with the special needs kids, is our focus on full inclusion and doing more of a co-teaching model from early childhood right through 12th grade, so that our kids who have whatever learning needs are accessing the curriculum that every other student is accessing, and what we're doing is trying to scaffold their supports so that they can learn at the same rate as their peers. And, you know, those are things, those are the kinds of things that I think that we should be doing. We have many other schools and districts have those kids isolated in separate classrooms, they end up having a less academic experience than their peers do, and that's inherently unfair. So, we've done a lot of work in those areas, making sure that all students have access to a high-quality curriculum and advanced coursework, and that when students need support, we provide them as opposed to exclude them, so.
So, Diane, Gladys has a couple of questions, and I'm going to put them together. They are already things that we talked about, but maybe she joined us late, so maybe you can just give a fast synopsis of what we talked about. Whether you're doing with schools not having Chrome, how are the kids going to learn, and not all parents having access to the internet or having computers or Chrome?
Yeah, so, as far as we know, there's at least one device in every home. We do have 14 homes that we've identified that don't currently have internet access, and we are working with those families and working with the Revere 311 and some of the programs that they've set up through Comcast and Verizon and others. The only impenetrable obstacle, and I shouldn't say impenetrable, because we have overcome it, but the only obstacle we've really found is people who have a past due bill, and we've been able to work around that, I'm confident that we'll continue to be able to work around that, to make sure the kids have the internet access that they need. And I will also add that that number, although we don't think that it's hugely diminished, but there are still the 130 kids at the high school that we haven't been able to reach out to. But I can confidently say that 98% of our students have and are connected to their learning plans.
Okay, Elaine writes, I certainly am in favor of prioritizing educators and support staff, exactly what type of administrators are in sight, so to speak, for being hired.
Yeah, so we had, when we thought that we were going to have a lot of money, we had talked about creating the Assistant Superintendent position that I spoke about a few minutes ago, we had talked about creating a dedicated English learner director position, which would be administrative, so to have somebody oversee the English learner program fully, we think it needs that kind of dedicated guidance. We had talked about adding three assistant principals at the elementary level for our larger elementary schools to help with some of social-emotional learning that we're focusing on, and where it's demonstrated been more difficult in schools with larger student populations, namely the Hill, the Wayland, and Garfield Elementary, and just making sure that that kind of support was there, so that teachers could focus on the teaching and administrators could focus on helping kids with whatever other adjustments they need in order to be successful in the classroom. We had looked to add an assistant principal position at Revere High School to focus exclusively on restorative practices and social-emotional learning. That person was going to do a lot around equity and make sure that our equity principles were being implemented well at the high school. None of those positions at this point are feasible.
Unfortunately.
Those were the administrative positions we were looking at.
Okay, Nadie would like to know why it's so difficult to be part of the school committee, and how parents can be included in the decisions made by the school committee?
I don't really understand. So, anybody can run for office.
Go ahead, sorry.
Susan, you can answer.
No, go ahead, Diane, go ahead.
I would say the school committee is elected body, so to be a member of the school committee, somebody would need to run for office, but if it was a matter of participating in meetings as people are doing right now, typically, we meet in person, and anybody is welcome to attend those meetings and participate. This is a little bit awkward tonight, because we're trying to do this meeting virtually, we are in the middle of a pandemic, and we're kind of trying to figure this out on the fly, so we're probably not doing this exactly right in terms of public speak, but we're trying to accommodate as best we can. I don't know if any school committee members would add to that from a school committee member point of view.
No, and kind of knowing Nadie, she, I think she might mean it in a different way, so I'm going to get back to her on that one. But she has one more question, I'm going to put it at the end, because if you have those, that's same question, is, so the next one by Elena, is the district budgeting for interpreting and translating services? It is definitely a need, and in order to have equity, our language in the district should be considered.
Hundred percent it's considered, all of our documents go in four different languages. Everything that we communicate to parents goes out in four languages. We have translators at every school, and we have three dedicated translators at the parent information center, and I can tell you that all of them have been doing unbelievable work, helping families and kids and teachers and administrators get connected with each other. So, you know, we do have resources around translator services. The one area we were hoping to increase that capacity in particular was at meetings, where we lack a bit, but like everything else that I've said about the budget, that of course is going to be on hold for now.
Okay, and Deborah White would like to know, and I lost her, will adequate funds be allocated to add more social workers and teacher training to address the residual trauma so many of our students and families are now experiencing due to illness, deaths, and especially the loss of jobs? This seems to be of utmost importance, as we cannot expect the majority of students to be able to return to normal for some time. Excellent question, Deborah. Go, De, Diane.
Yeah, so, it include new social worker positions, two additional school psychologists, and two behavior analysts, BCBAs, who could help kids with adjustments. And again, those positions are all being put on hold. You know, I have to say that everything that everybody is bringing up are really important things, and we understand that, we heard that, we got that message when we had the community forum on SOA. And Deb is actually spot on about what the kids are going to need for support when they come back. A lot of them are going to come back to us, whenever that may be, having lost family members, having endured new homelessness and poverty, because a parent or more than one parent lost a job. There's going to be a lot on these kids' shoulders, there already is, there's going to be even more in the coming months. Our priority will be making sure, it's one of the reasons that we haven't tried to set up a remote learning plan that puts a lot of pressure on kids to get 100% of the work done and get 100% of it right, and do it all on time, and do it at this time, and, you know, we try to take those kinds of burdens off of the kids, and off of the teachers, quite frankly, too, because our teachers are experiencing similar things right now. We're doing what we can to minimize, and Deb's point is not lost on us, it's definitely going to be a priority. One of the things that we have to start focusing on a little bit more, and we've started talking about it already, is what next year would look like if we do come back to school, not if, when we come back to school next year, what will that look like? How will that be different than what we know as school for all of these past years? And how can we work on giving kids opportunity to have that kind of social-emotional wellbeing check-in every day, and focus a little bit more heavily on that while still helping them get the academics they need to be successful post-high school? Or for the little ones even, we can focus on that even a little bit more. So, that is definitely on the radar and something that we need to focus on. As far as are we going to be able to hire more social workers, right now, the budget doesn't say that we will be able to, but we'll have to look at that. I think one thing that you see highlighted here, though, is how different people have different priorities. So, Deb is somebody who wants to focus on making sure that whatever money we get goes to social workers. We have some of the other people, you mentioned, Stacy, and I'm not going to remember everybody's name, but wanted to focus more on parent engagement and translators, and there'll be other groups of people, Gina's message from the beginning, that wants to focus on hiring teachers and paraprofessionals. You know, so it's one of the toughest jobs, I think, for superintendent and for school committee, is to find that middle of the road and really make those tough decisions when there's not enough money to do everything, what are the few things that you're going to focus on first? And it's going to be a challenge for the committee and for me to work on that together, along with Matt Cruz, who's our CFO, and the administrative team, and certainly teachers and parents and everybody else who's given us input.
So, there is another one by, let me see, I know there was one I missed, well, there's two, but, okay, one from Olga, how is the district engaging parents into the remote learning for our students?
I think that we missed that one.
I think so.
One thing I will say is that the schools have done an unbelievable job, primarily teachers and social workers, but also administrators have done an incredible job reaching out to families and really doing some one-on-one, gauging what their needs are, and doing whatever we can to take care of them, so that's in place.
Another one from Olga, can you post on the school website the schedule when the form for signing in for food delivery is open and when it is closed?
Yeah, you know, I actually had talked to Diplo Rana about that yesterday, and I believe that Dr. Vidal has already reached out to Paul Amato, who operates our website, and he's going to make that adjustment.
Okay, we have one from Claudia, she has children in the Revere schools. One of the questions she has is, how does a school committee measure the goals set and the educational success in the district?
Do you want to talk about the year that I update you on my goals progress?
No, I thought Carol was going to jump in all over this. No? Diane, go for it.
So, we did, five years ago, set our district five-year plan, and in it, we identified three big buckets which were our goals. At that time, we did focus groups, we actually did five separate focus groups with different groups of parents. We surveyed administrators, and we surveyed students, and understood from them what their priorities were for us to work on. This is how equity and parent engagement became one of our buckets, and that's why we had been working on that so much in the last five years. And then each year, we set goals in each one of those three areas to work on to try to improve our practices. And, you know, we've been doing that work, we did that work over the five years, I know that if anybody wanted to... wanted to look pat, look back at past school committee meetings, um, they would see where I shared the updates on um, each of our action steps have to be measurable. Um, so we talked about which steps we achieved. When we didn't achieve steps, we carried them over into a goal for the next year. Um, you know, we try to be somewhat ambitious in our goals and so sometimes we overshoot our targets, which is, I think of that. But all of that in- information is out there uh, as public record as, as a matter of the school committee minutes. Um, and part of the work that we were planning to do with the Student Opportunity Act was um, to write a new three-year plan, uh, three years because that's what the state requires with Student Opportunity Act, um, based on the feedback that we got from uh, parents and community members and students and teachers and administrators who attended our public forum on SOA. Um, the teachers told us that because of COVID-19, we don't have to prioritize getting that plan finished for them. Uh, and due to everything else that we're dealing with, I have opted to take their advice and not focus on uh, getting that rendered to paper. Uh, in a way, we had rendered it to paper because we wrote uh, and that was dictated by the feedback that we got at that meeting. So at some point, I will sit down and um, coordinate that data into a more readable document and that will become our focus for the next three years. But specifically, all of that, all of that planning, um, people giving us feedback. And people includes parents, students, teachers, community members, and the school committee.
Okay, Claudia has one, um, another question, and it's um, it's been kind of echoed through, um, Nadie asked it, um, someone else before Nadie asked it, and what are the responsibilities of the school committee? And I'd be more than happy to answer that one, um, and anyone can chime in. Um, so back in 1993 with the Magic, um, Mass Ed Reform Act, um, the law decided that how we were going to function. Um, and a school committee, our role is um, it's to be responsible leaders and we hire the superintendent, set in school district policies, um, including any um, facets such as establishing district goals, objectives, strategic plans, budgeting, and oversight of school spending, collective bargaining, um, and that's just to name a few. Um, and sometimes we need to get it out there, we need to promote our roles more. Um, and not, you know, sometimes people look at us as just who's coming to the spring concert, who's gonna be at graduation, but you know, uh, like I've always said, those are the things that are icing on the cake. That i- it reminds you why we're doing the job for advocacy and collective bargaining. Um, so we have to follow the guidelines of the state law, and we also have to, when we first get um, voted in, we have to attend eight hours of classes on what we need to um, be responsible for. So would anyone like to um, join in on that one?
No, that was very nicely said, Stacy.
I read it right from the paper, thank you, Susan. Uh, Michael?
Yeah, uh, I mean, are, you know, you just tipped on it a little bit about the budget, which obviously is the most, I think is one of the most important things because you can only spend what you have. And I know that with all the questions we got, they want us to do this, that, whatever, you can only do so much. And right now, obviously, where the money's gonna be a big unknown, to do anything in this budget, to hire people, will probably be irresponsible. So we have to try to keep what we have. That's the most important thing because we really don't wanna have to lay off people because we don't have the money. And I understand what people want, but we have to be fiercely responsible. And the budget's geared around one thing, it's all about the students. Everything is geared towards them, and that's how we set the budget up, and that's a very important part, I believe, of the school department, because you can only spend what you have.
And can I just add, advocacy is a huge piece also. Um, we need to remember that there was never one group that fought against the charter schools. Um, it was always um, a teamwork effort, whether it was through the superintendents association, uh, school committee association, MTA, parent groups. It's always been teamwork, the same thing when it comes to um, fighting for that extra money for the economically disadvantaged teamwork. We have advocated at the State House, at the White House, everywhere. Um, uh, the associations of superintendents, amazing work. Um, and again, MTA and parents groups. So it's never um, I, it's what we all do together, um, that makes everything work. So I mean, advocacy to me is a huge piece because we're fighting for what's best for all our students.
Well, I, I'd like.
Carol?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to add for that because I've seen it from several different points of view. And uh, it was very nice, Stacy, that you mentioned about the act that went in. Um, so that the school committee no longer did the hiring, no longer did the firing, no longer, um, almost made it difficult for teachers to operate within the school system, and they very wisely put forward Education Reform One, and that drastically changed the role of the school committee, I think for the better. Um, I absolutely agree that advocacy is a huge part of what we are doing. But more than that, I mean, we do appoint others beside the superintendent, but primarily appointing the superintendent and supporting the superintendent in, let's say, in executing the policies that we vote. And we vote on those policies as we see they will be beneficial to our children. And you need to have a superintendent who will, um, who is on the same page as you. And that is one thing that we have had. I mean, I was, when I was a union leader, we didn't always have that, that people were on different pages, but I have been very proud that once every form came in. I mean, we have our differences because we're a family, and obviously even in, in the best of families, there are differences.
Really?
But uh, we, we are very proud of the superintendent, uh, very, very proud of all of the teachers who are in Revia, really proud of our kids. That's one of the reasons we go and enjoy their celebrations of their success. And uh, and working together is the primary goal. And uh, and when you have people who are in there who will do that job, it makes it so much easier for us to do our job. And therefore, we're happy to listen to the parents who are suggesting what we should do maybe in a different way, and it gives us a different perspective as well. So um, I look forward to continuing to work with everybody. Um, it is about the family of our children, and no matter what they need, meeting their needs and moving forward. And on that note, I must say, I was very happy to see that we have moved up considerably in the placement of one of the best high schools. And I think the superintendent might want to address that.
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, I, you know, it's, it's interesting, those um, charts and tables sometimes frustrate me because I know that our kids are absolutely wonderful and uh, it kind of bugs me to think that somebody else here is rating our school district, which by translation can sometimes mean rating them, um, which I don't enjoy, but uh, we, the uh, World News, I mean, what is, what's it called, the um?
U.S. News and World Report.
I've done so much talking tonight that I think I've.
I know it. You must be exhausted.
The U.S. News and World Report uh, did come out, and uh, we were ranked 146th in the state of Massachusetts, uh, out of about 370 high schools. Um, and it's not an awesome rating, but um, what really struck me about it was that there were very few urban districts that scored above us, and there were uh, very few um, towns and communities around us who maybe don't um, have the same kinds of challenges we do with, with uh, poverty and English learners, who didn't score as high as we did. You know, so um, that was, that was uh, pretty encouraging.
It certainly was, yeah.
And you know, the, their criteria look at things like how many kids are going to college and how many of them take advanced coursework and uh, how many graduate on time and how many retentions are there. Those are the kinds of things that they weigh into that decision-making. Um, and it's, it's just an indication that we're on a right path.
We are. Thank you.
Okay, um, I just wanna say, I, I think I may have skipped some questions, um, but I would like, if we didn't cover your question, if you can submit it to um, the administration office and we will try to get back to you um, very quickly with answers. Um, I also will say, as far as um, one of the big concerns, it seems that read through all the question was, how can they have a seat at the table, whether it's policymaking, budget? Um, and you know, uh, again, our meetings are constantly open to the public. We have to abide by the open meeting law, so anyone is always welcome to come to the meetings. Budget time, it's always important um, to have um, some, some input. Um, at the end of the day, it is the school committee that does make that decision, but we really can't do that unless we hear from all of the um, you know, your teachers, your administrations, your parents. So it is at the end of the day that we make that decision, but we do love having people on board to give us their um, purview of whatever. The same thing, policies, most of our policies are set by law. Um, and so that's where it starts. Um, there are some policies that we, um, I have mentioned this before, a family engagement um, meeting that we perhaps could start looking at parents' input more on some of them, and those will always be posted. And I think if it pertains to parents' input, I might just um, you know, go out there and maybe um, get some parents to um, jump in from all aspects of the community, whether it's our special needs parents, whether it's parents um, economically disadvantaged, whether it's our AP parents, high school parents, all parents. So I, I definitely see in some of these questions, I will make an effort to really reach out more to everyone. Um, sometimes you have to be asked, just like I said, invite me to a meeting, invite any of us to a meeting, we'll be more than happy. Um, but we do have the rest of the meeting to get to, so if we did not answer those questions, um, you know, just submit them again and we'll be more than happy to get to them at some point. Anyone, last words for anyone?
Thanks, Stacy.
Thanks, Brian.
Could we take like a three-minute bio break?
We can take a three-minute break.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute and turn off my camera.
Good.
I, I would encourage everyone to mute and turn off their uh, their camera as well. Are we, uh, are we all back?
I think so. Fred?
Yep.
Fred is here.
Yes.
Alrighty. I, I'll extend a motion to uh, resume our meeting.
I think so.
So the next item on the agenda was uh, the report of subcommittees.
None?
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to uh, old business. Uh, revote on the 2019, 2020 calendar.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, if I could?
Ms. Kelly, Dr. Kelly.
Um, so we need to revoke the calendar using the um, commissioner's guidelines, um, to complete 185 days of school, and we have uh, worked this through with the teachers uh, and and relevant bargaining units. Um, so our original last day of school is gonna be June 16th. We had one snow day, which moved us to June 17th, and um, we typically calendar 184 days with students, so the 185th day for students will be June 18th. And uh, what we're asking the committee to do is vote on um, the calendar that would mark June 18th as the last day of school.
Okay. Any members have any questions?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Frazee.
Diane, how come we, we're doing the Thursday instead of the Wednesday if the last day was on the Tuesday, if we only had one snow day?
So the, the, so we do 184 days with kids, so the one snow day moved us to the Wednesday.
Right.
And the commissioner's guidance has said that we have to do 185 days.
Okay.
That puts us on the Thursday.
Okay, I get it. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sinella.
Diane, um, some communities canceled February, uh, April vacation. Why did you choose not to? That would have put us five days earlier on, uh, closing date for school.
We, we consulted with the teachers on that and, um, you know, remember that we were in a little bit of a different time period then too. It wasn't clear that we were going to be, uh, closed for the entire year. That information was coming out at the same time. Um, the teachers at that point were feeling a little bit stressed about the new learning environment. And they wanted to have the vacation and not, um, not come to school on those four days. Uh, so we, we, uh, we acquiesced to what their, what their wishes were.
That wasn't a decision made by us? That was a decision made by the teachers?
Well, in collaboration, we talked to them about it. We didn't want to, um, force teachers to work over that vacation week. Uh, that would have been a change in their working conditions. Um, and, you know, there were people on both sides of that argument. All, all had valid points. There were some, like you're saying, Freddie, who were saying, we should just go to school over that week. Keep the continuity, um, and keep things going. We were only in, um, the second week of, um, the actual remote learning plan. But other people felt like, um, the parents and the teachers and the kids all needed a break to kind of reset and reboot and figure out, um, how to make things work properly.
Thank you.
Well, if it's
Ms. Ty.
Uh, if it's appropriate, I'll make, uh, I'll make the motion to approve the calendar as submitted to us by the superintendent of schools.
Second. Second.
Okay, um, roll call.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Francie?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo? Seeing a yes?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to new business.
Diane, did you hear him?
Oh, I, I just heard we'll move on to new business. Is he gonna? Brian?
I'm here.
Okay. So I, I think it was a committee member who had, um, suggested this, um, calendar item, uh, a freeze on hiring.
Who, so whose, whose motion is the hiring freeze?
I, I'm sorry, I, I did prior to, um, yeah, so I made a motion at this time, um, with SOA in jeopardy and chapter 70 and title one, that maybe we should hold off and then take it a little bit at a time. But I think Diane, since then, had also let us know that this is definitely a wish of hers. So I told, well, my motion was on there, so.
Okay.
Well, I would, I would just clarify, Stacy, that, um, so, uh, a freeze on hiring, in my mind, means you can't hire any positions. And I would want to confirm with the committee that there are some positions that we still want to fill. One of them is Dr. Vodell's position. Um, other ones I can think of is if a small learning group teacher were to retire or resign, um, for some, for whatever reason, those are positions that, uh, that we need to fill legally. Um, so I, I actually would hope that, uh, if we use the language that I was talking about earlier, I'd not, uh, fill any new positions at this time, uh, but not have a hiring freeze, so that we're still free to, uh, fill needed positions. That, I think, would be the ideal scenario.
And I agree. And all that was in my motion. Um, so I thought that motion came off because there's nothing on the agenda about it. It's not written on the agenda or anything. So I assumed it was mute after you had already discussed it with us.
Okay.
I have it on my agenda.
You do? Where?
Under new business. And under that is, uh, under the freeze on hiring is the transportation contract.
No, but we didn't put, my motion was under, mine's under, it should have been under motions. So there's no motion there.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Sinella.
Um, point of information, Stacy, if we were to amend your motion to include no new hires, would that mean?
I don't have a motion. There's no motion.
The point, I think, is the motion didn't make it to the agenda and it seems like people aren't in favor of the motion anyway.
It's moot.
It's moot, okay. It wasn't that people weren't in favor of the motion. Um, it's the fact that Diane had already acknowledged it. And so there was nothing really to talk about where she already acknowledged that we needed to wait.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Francie.
Yeah. Diane, I guess the only people that we're going to hire is the ones that we have to replace.
That's right.
Right now. Okay. So that should be clarified.
It, um, that could change at any time.
Right, but right now.
I'm going to talk to you guys, uh, if any change actually occurs.
But we're speaking as of right now.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the transportation contract. Any members want to speak on that?
Excuse me, Diane, are these the new bu, for the buses? Which, which transportation contract?
Um, I, I think that came from, uh, Mrs. Mrs. Rizzo too. And I think that what she was looking for was information on, um, negotiating the existing contract down to, uh, acknowledge the fact that we aren't using the level of services that we had originally contracted for. Um, so, uh, Mr. Cruz had spoken about that with the
That's the same, okay, same thing.
So any other members? Okay. Uh, motion to place on file?
Second.
On favor, I'll oppose. So moved. Uh, now we'll move on to the vote on the 2020, 2021 calendar. Dr. Kelly?
Sure. So, um, we had been looking at, um, two different calendars for next year. Um, one of which started around our typical, um, and I, let me see if I can pull it up in front of me right now.
25th.
Yeah, so the first one started on August 25th, which is around our, um, typical start time. Um, no, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry. Uh, however, uh, Labor Day is unusually late this year. Um, so an alternative calendar, uh, that we had put forward actually started the week after that on, um, September 1st. And, um, we were debating whether it's better to start earlier and just get that week under our belts. Typically, things like that help us, um, when it comes to snow time, if we end up having a lot of snow days. Uh, of course, these were drafted at, at a time before COVID-19. Um, and just thinking about where we are right now, uh, it's definitely helpful for parents and teachers and everybody else to have an idea of what we hope next year will look like. Um, of course, this is still very variable based on the global pandemic that's happening right now. Um, I would encourage the committee to vote for the, the later start date uh, of, of, um, September. And this is actually going to change a little bit, uh, September 2nd. Um, because it'll just give us more time to prepare for all of the different kind of environment we know we're going to be experiencing next year. Um, and then, uh, one amendment that I'd make to the draft calendar, and these were shared at the February school committee meeting. Uh, one amendment I would make to that, uh, calendar that right now says school would start on September 1st is because that is primary election day in the state of Massachusetts, that we actually make, um, September 1st be a professional development day that had in the, in that draft calendar been scheduled for August 31st. But instead make that professional development day on September 1st, so no kids are in school. And then the first day of school for kids would start on September 2nd.
Okay, any members have any questions? Uh, motion to, uh, accept the 2020, uh, 2021 calendar?
Second. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Francie?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Ty? I'm seeing a yes though. Yes?
Ms. Ty?
She's unmuted.
Carol?
Ms. Ty?
You have to unmute Carol.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Ty voting on the calendar?
Yes, I did. You mean you didn't hear me? Sorry. Okay, yes.
Yes for Ms. Ty. Mr., uh, Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
Move.
All right. We'll move on to the school committee interests. Um, the one item I have is a mental health audit.
Yeah, so I, is, this is, uh, something I've been working on, uh, with committee member D'Ambrosio around, um, engaging a, a group to come in and do a, an audit of our, uh, mental health supports. And of course, this fits right in with the work that we've been doing around social emotional learning and making sure that we have the kinds of, um, things in place that kids need so that they can be successful if they're experiencing any kind of, um, an emotional setback. It's actually quite timely, given, uh, everything that we talked about earlier, um, what the kids are going to come back to school, uh, during. Um, and we had, uh, met with, um, one professional who was putting together a package to send us on what they could come in and really kind of take a deep look at the school department and talk to parents, talk to students and get their perspective on what we have that is working and find areas where we need to improve, so that that can guide our work going forward. Um, and so I just wanted to share that with you. Um, it's one of those budget items that we have to think about. Um, you know, in, in light of the current budget situation, but I don't know, um, if, uh, Anthony, you want to talk more about that?
Yeah, I, I'd love to say something briefly. I mean, I know that the funding situation is tenuous given this crisis, but I, I'd ask everybody to sort of think back to the questions we've received tonight. And a lot of them were sort of centered around the emotional and mental wellbeing of the students coming out of a crisis like this, that's so turbulent socio-economically, health-wise, and in so many different ways. Um, this is a sort of issue that we should be pushing. It's something that, um, the administration has made a pretty large priority. And, you know, if, if we were to end up doing this in the end, we'd be working with world-class professionals. So, um, I'd urge everybody to consider that.
One question?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. D'Ambrosio, uh, Mr. Francie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Diane, do we have, I mean, I agree with the, uh, audit. I don't have a problem with it. Do we have any idea what this could potentially cost us?
We do have an estimate. It, uh, it's around, um, $30,000 to $60,000, depending on, uh, the level of services. Obviously, we would want to have, um, the full, the full level of services, which would be close to that $60,000 range. Um, Danielle and Josh are working on a grant application right now that focuses on these areas. And we are hoping that if that grant gets approved, we'll have the money, um, the, that will be our funding source. So that will eliminate the budget concern as being prohibitive to actually doing the work. Um, that grant application is due, I believe, next week. Um, and, and then it'll be a bit of a time after that before we'll know, um, if we got the grant or not. But we're, we're certainly, this is a priority. It's really important work and something that we need to do. So, um, we are working to try to find the funding outside of our budget bracket.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Sinella.
Diane, is there, uh, transfer of funds or somewhere that, because if you enter into a contract, whether you get the grant or not, you're going to have to pay for it.
We won't, we won't, uh, commit to a contract until we have the grant. And actually, in speaking to, um, our contact, and Anthony, her name escapes me.
Uh, Dr. Sharon Hoover of the University of Maryland.
Yeah, so, uh, in speaking to Dr. Hoover, we actually talked a little bit about, um, this flux that our schools will be in when they reopen in the fall. And, um, we, we thought, and she agreed that, um, a January start would be more appropriate. Hopefully by January, we have some semblance of a routine, uh, in place. And, um, you know, that would give a more accurate picture of what's happening in the schools. She even said, you know, when we first come back in September, the kids aren't going to feel right, the teachers aren't going to feel right, no one's going to feel right. And that's not when you want to take the temperature on how people feel. And whether they, they feel like they have the right supports or not, so.
So there's the grant, if you, if you don't get the grant, come the new budget July 1st, that could be budgeted then.
Say that again, Fred?
If you do not get the grant, it could be budgeted in the July 1st new budget.
Yeah, if we were to get some money, definitely, yeah.
No, I'm saying if we didn't get it, when we're doing the budget for July 1st, then the money could be appropriated then.
It could be, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other school committee interests? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, motions. Any motions? Okay. Um, with that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to meet an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purpose. Uh, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding the Revere Teachers Association, uh, negotiations with unions. And, um, I will say that the committee will not be reconvening in open session after, um, the, uh, executive session.
So
Second. Okay. On favor, I'll oppose. That will close our, uh, regular Revere School Committee meeting and we will move into executive session.
So I, be, this, this, uh, Zoom is being live streamed on YouTube for security purposes. I'm going to have us all log out and I will send you an invitation to a new Zoom meeting. Um, that will start right now. So just look on your email in about a minute or two, um, for a new link.
Great, thank you.